This is the May 5th special meeting of the Porter County. Commissioner Group.
Good morning, everybody. Let's please. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome. This will be Porter County Board of Commissioners special meeting. It's Tuesday, May 5th, two 2020. It's roughly at 1:30 in the afternoon. We want to get right into the agenda. Well, first up on our agenda, we're going to be updating our emergency declaration number four, or is that number six? I think it's, I can't read Roman numerals.
Number four, number four, four.
Number four. And Scott, you want to give an outline on that as to what we added to the update?
Okay, yes. So on the declaration COVID-19 of the 5th, excuse me, the 4th update to that. This contemplates the, in total, the COVID safety plan also on our agenda, along with the employee reentry plan. So we can talk to that, we can talk all as a whole at this point, because the emergency declaration, obviously, is a piece of that puzzle that talks about that as we begin to test our employees for the COVID-19 before we resume all normal working activity. This emergency declaration allows us to do that, basically maintaining the status quo that we have been doing for the past several weeks for now. And then as individual buildings within county, within the county government are able to be tested, those results obtained, then we are going to be having individual buildings go back to work under normal work schedules, along with the authority for the commissioners and department heads to work together to establish who may be able to work from home productively. So at this point, the emergency declaration allows for us to continue on as the testing begins, which obviously brings us to the testing portion of the meeting. We have been working diligently with our partner Franciscan, who is doing, who does our employee clinic. And through several days of hard work, also of uncertainty, we have been able to get some tests and to allow us to start doing testing Friday. With putting together all the pieces of that, as this is moving very quickly. We got confirmation today that we would actually have tests and how many we would have available and when potentially more would be available next week. At this point in time, we believe we have enough tests to be able to test our emergency first responders first, 911, and our facility staff, which is doing all of the cleaning and all of the buildings, and then be able to start opening up these buildings one by one, once we've basically been able to clear the employees. And then that also gives us the opportunity to implement our safety plan, which is the masks and the sanitizer and the antiviral and the extra cleaning, and all of the rules and procedures that are going into trying to attempt to safely open up our buildings with our employees, as we have quite a few buildings that have quite a few individual employees in them. The admin building is somewhere around, you know, I think the total amount to be tested here was north of 150 employees, almost 200. The Valparaiso courthouse by itself right now is over 100. Just the jail and the jailers and the merit officers and the court security and the administration at the jail, that's over 180 people. 911 is 51 individuals. So as we're able to bring these individuals in and kind of clear a building as we go, then we'll be able to implement the entire plan, which is basically to work as well as we can to bring everyone back as safely as we can under this plan. So that is the emergency declaration. It's also the COVID safety plan. And then that's also the Working Well Franciscan Clinic Amendment that would allow for this testing.
Okay. Just, just for clarification, the first responders that we're talking about are our county employee first responders.
Correct.
That would be the 911, the jail, the police department, anything EMA. Those are county employees. So just, just to be clear again, this is testing for all county employees. And we'll be starting with our first.
Can we talk a little bit about what our thinking was behind the testing? And just maybe start at square one for the employees' sake, to understand what our whole thought process was? And I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, go ahead and lead the charge, Laura. I know we've all been talking about it, but let's go ahead and, yep.
Well, our thinking was, so day one, when everybody comes back to the building, we know we have a clean building. These are very good tests. You do not have to be symptomatic to get an accurate test result with this type of test. So when we get there and we all have masks and we've all been tested and everything's been sanitized, you have a safe place to come to work. That's our primary goal here, is to keep everybody safe and healthy. And moving forward, we'll talk some more about what we're going to do to continue. Obviously, testing before the first day doesn't mean you're never going to get it. It just gives us a great ground zero. And with the state's testing program, if people do start to become symptomatic, you have somewhere to go and get a free test. And we're doing some other screening that we'll get to as we go, but that's our thinking. That cover it okay?
Yes, I think so. Yep, I think so too.
What I think, what I'd like to add too, is that besides our employees having a safe place to come to work, where we can get everyone back to work in the traditional manner, is that it also allows us to know whether or not, you know, as this plan kind of gets put all together and we're putting people back in buildings, and at the same time, we're still having limited public access, which we'll get to in a little bit. It gives us an opportunity to see and show whether or not we can get everybody in the building under this protocol and not have any kind of issues. And if we do well, which we believe we will, then we can start looking at opening the building up to the public and allowing them to come in under certain circumstances, so that we have an idea and a little bit of control over exactly what's happening and where things may be coming from or not coming from. So it's all part of a plan to be able to try to get, again, the public, the employer.
Yeah, it was just Scott, McLaren there. I would, there he is. Did you guys hear me? We, you cut out on the last 30, 40 seconds, but you're back now.
Okay. Well, basically, just to allow, as we, you know, as we go through this process of bringing the employees in.
Just keeps freezing. Well, we got Attorney McClure froze again with our Zoom technical difficulties. But what I would like to just point out, I think Commissioner Blaney gave a good rundown. I think, you know, this is probably breaks, breaks the ranks with maybe what, what other governments are doing out there. And I think at the end of the day, I would like to just say that the reason that we were able to do this and that we were able to go at it in this direction was I think that it's a result of all the hard work that this office has done over the last five, four years in restructuring our health insurance program. And the wellness clinic that we have now for the county is playing in, with our company that we work with here locally for our insurance, we were able to, you know, be able to turn and pivot and be able to do more creative things like this. So again, to me, this, this is a result of the work, you know, we always tout the insurance and the savings and all the things that we've done over the last five years. Now we're getting into the real way that you can show people and we can show the citizens of, of the work that's been put into our health insurance program. And this is allowing us to do that. And it should, you know, you know, we're going to be amending this through the insurance program and it should be, it should be absorbed relatively fairly easily. And, you know, again, I just, the platform that we're on at Porter County Government or Health Insurance is allowing us to do creative things and to talk and work outside the box in these type of situations. Unfortunately for us, we had a couple partners and stakeholders in this that were able to pull some things together rather quickly and allow us to do this. So I just want to, again, go back to the insurance again, and this is how we're able to do all this through our wellness program. So are you back, Scott?
I'm back.
Okay. So do we need to vote on the, the declaration, which should cover two and three?
Correct.
Okay, so we're, we're basically going to be voting on one, which will cover items two and three onto the agenda.
Well, I think, Kirk, can you put the COVID safety plan up?
It was up there for a little while.
So that would be the safety plan that we would be providing, posting publicly in all of our buildings. It would also be what we would be providing to our employees. I don't know if anyone has that. I'm sorry, my connection hasn't been the greatest, but this would be, this is the document that we could potentially modify as we go further, if in fact, we need to make some changes to it. But this will be sent to all the employees and posted everywhere along. So yes, we can adopt the safety plan and the emergency declaration number four. And then we can move on to the clinic amendment.
Okay.
Okay, motion to approve, as noted by Scott. And I wanted to point out to the employees that you'll be receiving copies of the plan in your email today.
Yep. So we have a motion. I will second. Madam Auditor, roll call.
Yes, Commissioner, good.
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
And Commissioner Biggs? Not present. Two to zero.
Okay, well.
Employees, real quick, will also be receiving information about the testing procedure and the test itself. So you'll be well informed before you go to get your test.
And now we're going to move into the next thing, which is, well, no, we, the next thing on the agenda, we'll discuss the, do we want to discuss the safety and action plan at all, Scott? I know we didn't get into it much, but maybe give some basic. Is it this Friday, Scott? No, he's still frozen.
We could. Is.
Well, we're having, we're having troubles here with Scott's connection. I think what we'll do now is we'll move number four. We can come back and discuss the safety and action plan a little bit. But again, that's the plan that will be in all of our buildings as we begin to open up to the public. We will be starting our testing. We're putting the plan together now. We're going to be starting with, like I said, our emergency responders and first responders are going to be going first. And then we're going to be setting up a schedule of departments and people based on priority of contact. I'd also like to point out here too, when the building does open up, we will have a lot of people coming into the public wanting to pay their taxes and wanting to do other things. So, you know, we've put all the safeguards in place, Plexiglas, all kinds of things to be able to, you know, knowing that our employees now are tested and now being able to receive the public in a healthy way. And, you know, then there will also be tracing, there'll be other things. We'll be able to shoot temperatures on people coming into the building, employees coming into the buildings. We also have tracing, that we'll be able to start tracing on our employees. So if there is a problem, we have the ability to trace it back to find out a lot of the details. So the, the safety and action plan is sort of the meat and potatoes of everything. And that's what we'll be sort of working through. But I, Scott, I just wanted, I think I talked about earlier, I think we're planning on starting testing relative, maybe give some dates as to when we're going to test and when we're going to open up the building again and all those other things.
The testing will begin Friday and we can do about 90 a day. So that will begin the process. The people back to work, then we're going to wait a period of time. Once we start feeling comfortable that that building is working, then we're going to move into opening that building at that time.
We're having a hard time hearing you again, Scott. You're just breaking up. I don't know why. We can, let's, Laura, let's just move into our next piece of the agenda, which is the adoption of the furlough plan for the Expo and Memorial Opera House. I know that it's already been in the paper, because we've notified everybody last week. But I know we've been looking into our venues, sort of watching the weeks anxiously as to when we could come out. When the governor's order came out last Friday, it appeared to us that larger groups getting together is going to be a little further out than what we had initially maybe thought. So what we did is we decided to furlough our employees in the Expo and Memorial Opera House, all of them but the managers or directors of those departments. And we'll be furloughed out through those days. And then hopefully, when we bring them back, we'll have some work and some business to open up to and we can start bringing our employees back. So this is a short-term situation, but we really didn't know where it was going to end up. There were a lot of people that were still wanting to hold on to these dates. And we didn't want to give up the revenue, but as soon as the governor came out, that sort of set the timetable for us and we're just acting accordingly. And after all the two events, they take in money from the outside and that's what funds them. So with no money coming in from the outside, you know, we had to tweak her down and, and write it out. So unfortunately, we have some great employees out there. We were sorry to do that. But I think hopefully, if we can all come back strong here, I think if it goes well, we'll be able to bring them back and get them back in with the county. So I just wanted to point that out and that's something that we have to act on too. So Laura, I don't know if you had any comments or?
Yeah, I would just echo what you said. These are both self-funded venues. And when there's no revenue, there's no revenue. They're not general, part of the general fund. So there's just no money there when there's no revenue. And I'd like to give a shout out to the employees who are very understanding and want to be part of the solution and they're, they're looking forward to having their jobs available when they come back. So we're trying to look out into the future to make sure these two venues that everybody loves remain viable. And I think as Scott McDonald said in his email to patrons, you know, the employees are what really make these places special. So, you know, we're lucky to have these people and looking very much forward to having them back.
Yep. So we probably need to adopt this plan, the furlough plan. So I'll throw it to the floor, Laura, and we can act on it.
Motion to adopt the furlough plan for Memorial Opera House and Porter County Expo Center.
And I will second that, Madam Auditor.
Yes, Commissioner, good.
Yes.
Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
Two to zero.
Thank you. Next up, we, on our agenda, we have discussion on COVID-19 financial implications. But, and I wanted to let you know too, I know we're having difficulties with explaining our, our COVID and some of our rules. We'll all be getting, after this meeting, you'll all be getting information as to the times and what we'll be doing. It will all be spelled out. And, you know, a lot of it is what we're doing on the state, what we're doing in Porter County, which then dovetails into what the state is doing. I'd also like to make a little bit of a clarification out here. I've talked to a couple other mayors and some folks around Porter County. When the state program came out last Friday, all over the weekend, I know Commissioner Blaney and myself, and I'm finding out some other folks, we're getting calls from the restaurant community, not really quite certain on what we were doing. What, what's really going on here is the state, we're basically following what Governor Holcomb has put out in there in place. I think it's a little, it's a little confusing, because you can get to 50% open in the dining room on the second week of phase two or stage two. I don't think that the, the second week was picked up on. It was more in a small print. But, you know, a lot of, there was some confusion there. So we just wanted to take this opportunity to just let everybody know that, you know, your, your at-home restaurants will be able to open at 50% occupancy dining next Monday. Age two starts this week, but 50% dining starts in the second week of phase two, or stage two, I'm sorry. So just wanted to put that clarification out there. I think more, most people have gotten it down now. But we just wanted to put that out there. So we had a point of reference that you just need to go back and read those, those documents and.
And the date is May 11th.
May 11th.
Yep.
And what is that email address again? Back on track? It's a backontrack.in.gov. And if you go to back, backontrack.in.gov, you will find everything on there that you're, you, you would need for clarification and what have you. So just wanted to get that done. Scott, you in a better way now?
I think so. I switched over to the cell phone. It seems to be holding a little bit better. I think we need to make a motion and approve the Franciscan clinic agreement.
Oh, okay. I thought that was in the declaration, but it's not, huh?
No.
Okay.
A motion to approve the agreement with Franciscan.
Second, Madam Auditor, roll call.
Commissioner, good.
Yes.
And Commissioner Blaney?
Yes.
Two to zero.
Thank you. Again.
And then also, on the testing itself, on the testing itself, we're going to start Friday and we're probably going to do about 90. Go into next week, we'll be, the commissioner's office and the HR department will be in close contact with the places that will be getting tested. So the employees just will be communicating or over-communicating with you. So lots of information is coming. I just wanted to say that before we moved on to the financial implications portion.
And, and I also like to clarify too, over, I know a lot, everybody's watching the news, reading the papers. There's been a lot of news reports here lately that they're starting to ramp up testing, the state and other folks. You know, this testing that they're talking about, that you're reading about, is if you're symptomatic. And what, what we're talking about for our employees is real true testing to test to see if they have it or not. It's a very reliable test, as Commissioner Blaney said, and we'll have answers within 24 hours. We just feel that this was the safest way to bring our employees back. And again, this is an amendment to our health and wellness clinic agreement that we have with Franciscan, so. So with that, we move to number five, which is discussion on COVID-19 financial implications, correct, Scott?
Were, were we going to have Scott do a little explanation of our safety plan? I think he froze while he was trying to do that.
Yes.
Okay. So the safety plan at this point is it starts with the employee testing. And then we've gone back and we outlined when the building is open to the public, the public will be required to wear a mask while in the public areas. Our employees will be required to wear masks while they're in the public slash common areas. We're going to highly recommend the mask wearing when they're in their private workspace. But we're going to, all the things that, some of these things have been in place, but the hand sanitizer stations, the antiviral cleaning solution that our, that our facilities department has been providing, enhanced cleaning of these common areas, along with the restrictions as far as who's coming in and out of the buildings. But we've laid it all out very succinctly. Again, we're looking for the sneeze guards and those things like that, that would allow us to have as much protection for everyone as we possibly can. Hey, Jeff, you're muted.
Saw that. Yeah, any other questions from Scott or? Okay. Um, discussion of COVID-19 financial implications.
So this is the conference call that the commissioners had with the council leadership concerning some of the concerns moving forward with revenue. Obviously, we have a revenue issues that we have to discuss. We had cash flow issues to discuss. And so, you know, that's in the works, as the commissioners are aware. We're looking at hiring freeze. We're looking at general front additional requests being highly discouraged and a process to be able to move forward with any kind of additional request. We're also dealing with the hiring freeze and then also the discussion of allowing the auditor to have some authority to do some inter-fund borrowing. So those departments that have a cash, a cash flow issue due to some timing because of the COVID, which is different than a revenue problem, but if they have a cash flow issue, we're in discussions with the council to be able to give the auditor some authority to do some inter-fund borrowing. So we don't have funds running into the red, but we also then don't have to have the expense of loaning or bonding or anything like that at this point. So those, that, that joint resolution between the council and the commissioners is in process. But basically, it's the fiscal body and the executive looking forward to try to diagnose what revenue slash cash flow problems we may have, so we can start planning as we move through 2020 and into 2021. So that will be coming soon. So that was the basic discussion on the COVID finance issue.
Yep. Commissioner Blaney, you got anything you want to say or?
I'm now just continuing to have these conversations with the council. We all seem to be on board and working together well. And we all know we have to tighten our belts and make this as smooth as possible.
Yep. Yeah, so if. Yeah, so if there are county department heads or whatever that are listening to this podcast, uh, uh, there's gonna be a very, uh, there's gonna be a document that goes out to everybody. Pretty clear that there's no additionals. Um, and so, you know, unless it's an emergency or something that really is, uh, needed, um, I think it's gonna be pretty tough, but, um, you know, we do have a few things that, uh, you know, we, we will need to get done. But, uh, we, we had a nice discussion working out through the year and, um, it's, it's, it's gonna be interesting. I think the state, um, they're, they're probably gonna be, uh, looking at some things. And, you know, right now, uh, like this whole pandemic, we always seem to be behind on data. And I think that, uh, you know, that's something that hopefully over the summer, we can sort of catch up with everything. I know the state is probably going to be looking at their finances and what's happening there, so, uh, stay tuned. Uh, it should, uh, it, it should start working itself out. Um, but, uh, right now, the pause that we've just experienced over the last several months is gonna continue to work itself out through many different, uh, functions. And, uh, hopefully by the end of the year, we can, uh, uh, at least get caught up on the government side of things. So I think that's what we're hoping for, uh, but we are talking, we are meeting and we are working through issues. So that was really all I had, uh, and any others, anything else from any of the other commissioners or anybody else on the call?
I just wanted to point out briefly that, you know, it's been, we have great people, um, elected officials and employees, everyone has been just so willing to work together. And it, it just really makes this job that we have to do in our department a whole lot easier. That's it.
Well, good. That's, that is, well, what we have left on the agenda, uh, for today's meeting. Uh, again, I'm, I'm very thankful that, uh, county government is in a position to where we can step up and test all of our folks and, uh, go about it the right way. And we're very excited about this and we're very excited to get back to business here and taking care of the county's, uh, day-to-day business. Um, it, it, it has stretched us as a county. Um, but hopefully we can get everybody back on board here and follow the governor's, uh, back on track and, uh, we can come out of this, uh, stronger and better. And, uh, so, uh, step one on the reopening, here we go. So stay tuned. I'm sure there'll be more, uh, updates coming, uh, but with that, uh, you know, with that, I think this board, uh, stands in recess.